Welcome to the Madawan Aberdeen Regional School District Special Meeting of the Board on July 13th, 2023. Time is now 6:32 PM. The New Jersey Open Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or agreed upon. In accordance with the provision of this act, the Madawan Aberdeen Regional School District Board of Education advertises being on June 26, 2023, in the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger. This notice was sent to the municipal clerks of the borough of Madawan and the township of Aberdeen and the Madawan Aberdeen Public Library. The notice was also placed on the district's website. If we could please stand for the pledge allegiance. Ms. Case, can we please have Vercola?
Ms. Vailas?
Here.
Ms. Gershner?
Here.
Mr. Montone?
Here.
Ms. Pell?
Here.
Ms. Barrow?
Here.
Ms. Warnke?
Here.
Ms. Martinez?
Here.
Mrs. Colley?
Here.
So originally on the agenda we had under superintendent's report, the update on staff morale research, we're actually going to move that till the August meeting, so that won't be happening tonight. In terms of the board president's report, well first off, I just hope everyone is enjoying their summer so far. Seems to be flying already. Tonight, as you know, we will be conducting interviews for the vacancy for Madawan, for the board. Just a reminder, the positions term will run until the reorganization meeting, which happens in early January of 2024, and this position is also up on the ballot at the annual election in November 2023, which I believe submissions for that are at the end of July to submit for the position to be on the ballot. Also, just a reminder to the public that the application for subscription busing is open until tomorrow, July 14th, and you need to do it online, and it's, the information's all on the district website. Before conducting the board interviews, we do want to go through the board business quickly if we could, and then we'll move on to conducting the interviews. So with that, we're going to move to curriculum and instruction. Ms. Perez?
Good evening. Under curriculum and instruction, we're asking for board approval for our action items listed under A, travel, B, 1 through 4. That concludes curriculum and instruction.
Thank you. Can I get a motion in a second to approve the agenda?
I'll motion, second.
Okay, then we're going to move on to student services. Ms. Perez?
Under student services, we're asking for board approval for the following action items listed under 1 through 6 on pages 1 through 4. That concludes student services.
Thank you. Can I get a motion in a second to approve the agenda?
I'll motion, I'll second.
Great. Then we're moving on to personnel. Mr. Leibman?
Thank you. Good evening. We're to begin the personnel agenda first with a walk-in item, so the board has this in front of you. Walk-in item, we're asking the board to approve the recommendations for appointments for the 23, 24 school year as listed on the walk-in item. To the regular action agenda, we're asking the board to take action and approve items A, B, C, 1 through 5, D, 1, D 2. That concludes personnel.
Thank you. Can I get a motion in a second to approve the agenda?
I'll motion, I'll second.
That brings us to policy, first read. Mr. Leibman?
We're asking the board to approve policy as listed on page 1 of 1 for first read. That concludes policy.
Can I get a motion in a second to approve the agenda?
I'll motion, I'll second.
Great. And then if I could turn it over to Ms. Pell on policy, if you wanted to talk that now, since you were in charge of the committee?
Sure. I don't want to take up too much time, but I just did what wanted to review that these are, for once, not changes recommended by Strauss Asme, but are, this is the report from the policy committee of the proposed changes to the technology policy, just based on our experience over the last couple of years and taking a look and wanting to update. And so I just wanted to review that the, overall, the changes in the policy, the revisions fall into categories, including updating, the broadest part was updating references to specific types of technology. A lot of the technology referred to through the policies was frankly out of date, and so we both were trying to update it and also try to future-proof the language by using more general terms. I think an example might be that beepers were mentioned multiple times in there, or I think they were called paging devices. Also, we wanted to reflect the current MRSD situation, which is that right now, a student receives a Chromebook and curriculum is delivered over the Google Suite. These, we cannot deny the use of school-issued technology or internet access, it's just not possible. And there were quite a few points in the policy that suggested that as discipline. But we still want to, we instead refer to building-level progressive disciplines through the code of conduct. Also, very specifically, we are tightening permissions to using student-owned technology within school to, on one side, to accommodate necessary devices such as phones used to connect implanted medical devices or digital cameras used for classes, but on the other hand, that really promoting the use of Chromebooks in school, not student-owned devices nearly as much when it comes to accessing the curriculum inside of the school. And then in general, we tightened up wording to really bring forward a focus on maintaining privacy of, and respecting the privacy of students around you when it comes to capturing images or video of each other and posting it. There was already some language in the policy saying that that really was inappropriate, but we wanted to strengthen that more in keeping with the spirit of where we are as a district right now. And then also, just really emphasizing that cellphones specifically should be off or silenced and away in class. So that's overall, I don't know if anybody's seen, any questions about anything specific in there? I don't know if this is the appropriate time.
Yeah, I think it's a good time to talk about it. So one, I wanted to thank you, Ms. Pell, and the entire policy committee, because I know it's a lot of hard work to go through all of the policies, make sure that we're meeting state guidelines, as well as still capturing what we need in our district and what meets the needs of the students. So thank you very much for that, because it is, it can be very time-consuming and it's tough to go through every policy, because there are, as you see here, just on technology, there are six policies. I did have one question, which I forgot to send in, which was on the use of electronic communication and recording devices. I didn't think that I saw buses mentioned in terms of the recording, so there was in school, you know, not recording other students, that sort of thing, I wasn't sure if we wanted to mention buses.
The, as far as I know...
But I may have missed it.
It does talk about, it defines at the top of it what's considered school property, and I think it's pretty broad. Now, there is a whole section in that one, because it also separates out that there are cameras on the buses, so that, just to let people, students and families know that students' images are being captured, but that would not be to broadcast, that would be as a security. That's in there, but that was already in there, we didn't make any changes to that. But we could look at, I mean, this is first reading, we could look at the definition of school property and make sure that it captures buses.
Maybe it's just included within the school grounds, because they can use their phones on the bus, I believe, right? Because you guys said just not on school grounds?
Um, sorry.
I'm not sure if I got that.
I mean, the largest focus, there's a definition of the school day that we didn't, we didn't touch, that was already there, and there's a definition of what's considered school property, because there is a difference between using your phone outside of the school day on school property and, again, capturing images outside of people's, without their permission and broadcasting it. So I guess that's a good thing for us to check.
So just something to consider, not so much not using them, but just when we get into the capturing images of kids and potentially putting them out there on social media in a, you know, in a way that's not appropriate, that would be my only thing to look at.
Well, and that's the same policy that has an extended, the mandated section of the policy had an extended section on pagers, and this, the question's still out there between first and second reading, is do we have to have that in there? Because we might, because there's a lot of state law mentioned in it. I wonder if the state law may be gone, because it was from the 90s clearly, but that's something between first and second reading that might change anyway. So that's a policy that maybe we have to look at more, even though everybody thought they were gone.
Right. Okay. I don't know if any other board members have questions or comments.
So I feel the busing scenario, I know that some of the policies spoke to, you know, extracurricular activities that were on campuses. The busing might fall under enforcement and confidentiality, which is what we were trying to focus on for the students' understanding that capturing images of other people is a violation of confidentiality if you do not have their, you know, participation in that, so that is something that we could probably look on a little bit more closely. I don't know if busing specifically was mentioned, but I know that there is definition of the campus exactly, so we can look at that again.
Anyone else? I think we are going to move on to finance. Ms. Case?
Good evening. We're looking to take action on items 1 through 3 this evening.
Thank you. Can I get a motion in a second to approve the agenda?
I'll motion, I'll second.
Great. Any questions or comments from the board on agenda items? Okay, so then we're going to go over public comments on agenda items and additional matters. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on matters of interest to the school community. Individuals wishing to speak must state their name and municipality of residence. Comments are limited to three minutes duration, but an individual may speak a second time after all others who wish to speak on the topic have been heard. All statements should be directed to the board president, and no participant may address or question board members individually. All speakers are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of others whose legal rights may be affected. Please note, while it is not the board's intention to stifle comment on matters of legitimate concern, the public should be aware that if their statements violate the rights of others under the law of defamation or invasion of privacy, they may face personal liability to the injured party if speakers are uncertain of the legal ramifications of their comments. The board urges them to seek guidance beforehand from their own legal advisor. So if we have any public comments?
Casey Baroka, 19 M L A Lee Farmingdale, New Jersey. I just have a question about the technology policy that you guys were just talking about, and I don't necessarily disagree with the premise of in school, your phone should be away. However, I know that there are some teachers who, for example, might have a little QR code in their room that might be a do-now or function as an exit ticket, so I don't know how broad the policy is that would allow for that freedom. The other, and it's not a concern, I don't disagree with the premise that you shouldn't be taking pictures of people who don't allow you to, however, do we, as a school district, have the authority to do that, or is that a violation of someone's rights to be able to take a picture? Now, whether they post it and then we say, hey, that's something different, so we, I just think we need to be mindful of that. So that's my two cents, that's all.
What campuses are the QR codes being used on?
So you don't really see it here. You tend to see it, it can happen at the high school, I've heard it happening there. In fact, I recall years ago, we had a teacher, when QR codes first came out, she was like, these things are great, you can just post them in your classroom, instead of like listing the whole do-now, it's a Google Doc that opens up. That was, that also kind of predated everybody getting a laptop, so that may be out the window, but I do know, like, I have a son that's in high school, he's going to be a senior. They all have their phones out at school, they're all texting their friends in the hallway and stuff like that, so I don't, you know, I'm kind of on the fence whether that should be allowed or not. The question just becomes, who's policing that? Because if we have, you know, a thousand kids at the high school and they're all doing it, it's, well, you know, what are we doing there? So that's just my two cents, that's all.
And I think that's one of our next steps that we've talked to, is enforcement and discussing how we enforce and what we're enforcing specifically, so once the policy is approved, then I think we're going to go from there. And that'll be posted before the next meeting, correct, the policies?
Yes, that's correct. It'll be on the district website.
This way, the community can take a look at them if they have any comments, as well as yourself. There aren't major changes to the policies, like going through them, but there are changes within some of them more than others.
Hi there, Lori Scott with Madawan. I have a question about, does the policy state anything about usage during lunch?
Do you want me to answer? As, I've got the other committee members, as far as I know, it was more about usage during class time. That was really the issue, was, was usage of a cell phone, so hallways even not necessarily under the proposed changes, but it was during class time that, not that it can never be done, but that there needs to be a structure. What we proposed was a structure where the teacher approves that and then sends that approval to the principal, who then, all the approvals are on file. That means a much more formal process than we've had for using your cell phone as, to access curriculum, with the understanding, I mean, that when people were using more devices, because we all had, I think not everybody had a Chromebook, it was different, but now that we really are making an effort for everyone to have a Chromebook, that it would be that, that they would use a Chromebook for accessing curriculum.
Thank you. Can I, sorry, just building on that, I think the concern, like Ms. Pell said, is it's really in the classroom, because we've seen an uptick in terms of kids using them within the classroom, not necessarily for what they're being asked to do in the class, also during test-taking, shouldn't be happening, and it does, I think, in every district. So just that sort of thing in the classroom specifically, when learning's supposed to be happening. If it's part of learning, that's different, which is why you have some, you know, wording in there built in.
The reason I ask is just having a daughter who has high stress and anxiety, her using her cell phone during lunch is for her time to regroup and de-stress, and if that was a policy for the cafeteria, that would probably impact her ability to go back into the classroom without having that, so that's why I wanted to ask. Thank you.
What we really did focus on was responsible use of technology across the board, that's really what it was, and delivery of instruction, if appropriate, would be responsible use.
Great, thank you.
Mrs. Polly?
Yes. Just say also to Katie's, again, thank you for the work on the policies, but to Ms. Pell's point, so the biggest thing is enforcing, and it's such a hard thing, because it's like, they, they have them, they need them, there are so many kids, how do we enforce? What's good, what's bad? And I know in the policy, it said that if a teacher wanted to use the phone for that day, that they would have to then get approval from the principal, so like navigating that, I'm thinking in the high school and the middle school is tough, I'm not sure how that would even work. But yeah, the biggest thing was like, you know, as casual as, hey, guys, test, put your phones away, or, you know, have a basket, like, we just talked about the old-school ways that we used to do things, you know, trying to just tighten it up a little bit, which is what we spoke about mostly, not rewriting the policy, but just tightening it. So that's something that we focused on this summer with a couple other things. Thank you.
With permission, I think that this kind of feedback is really helpful, though, because the intent was, I mean, yeah, we're dancing around it, I mean, it was really about cheating and about abusing each other on campus. I mean, we can't control what people do at home, but we can deal with what's going on here, and those two things are what we're focused on, so if we're unintentionally hurting by being too harsh, please give us feedback. I mean, we have the time, and that's, that's what we're hoping for.
I, sorry, I think the intention is really, you know, we're talking about things like social media, bullying, safety, you know, using the phones wisely, I think it's really, the intention was more towards that. I think people got used to using their phones for a lot more because of the pandemic. Some kids only had access to certain things with a phone, you know, especially if they were home and they didn't have a Chromebook, we're getting away from that, as Ms. Pell said. So there's kind of a habit now forming, or has formed, or it's probably too far gone at this point, but we're really trying to make it so that school is about focusing on classroom instruction, and we're hoping that this will help bring that back by, as has been said, the enforcement piece that has gotten a little bit lax, and I don't, I'm not faulting anybody, it's just how it's been, people were not in school for a long time, they got used to kind of doing things the way they were used to doing them, so it's kind of like, a little bit getting back to basics with what is already in there. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Any other public comments? Okay, then we are going to vote on the action items. Okay, so then we are going to go ahead and vote on the action items on the agenda. We have curriculum and instruction, A, B, 1 through 4, student services, 1 through 6, personnel, A, B, C, 1 through 5, D, 1 through 2, and walk-in item number 1. Policy, there are six policies up for first read, and then finance, 1 through 3. Ms. Vailas?
I'll abstain from curriculum and instruction, A, travel, and yes to everything else.
So noted. Ms. Gershner?
Yes, Jordan Leibman.
Mr. Montone?
Yes.
Ms. Pell?
Yes.
Ms. Barrow?
Yes.
Ms. Warnke?
Yes.
Ms. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Colley?
Yes.
Okay, so now we are going to move into the interviews for the vacant Madawan seat for the board, and we have two candidates here, and Mr. Mandel, our counsel, is going to go ahead and conduct those interviews. What we'll do is similar to last time, where we'll have each candidate answer each of the questions, and then the second candidate, but while one's answering, the other will be in the library, which we can show you where that is. Perfect, so who is there?
Good evening, Ms. Polly. My name is Aaron Mandel, covering for David Rubin, who's the board's attorney this evening, and on behalf of the board, I have a list, I have six questions that we're going to pose to you, and then we'll pose the same ones to the other candidate later. The first question, oh, actually, I'm sorry, do you want to?
Oh, yeah.
Would you just mind introducing yourself?
Sure. My name's Kathleen Hockey, live here in Madawan. I grew up here.
All right. First question is, why do you want to be a board member?
Sure. So I've been passionate about education forever. When I went to college, I majored in education, that was my plan. I have a master's degree in teaching. After school, after I graduated, I went and taught college for a number of years, then I started my own small business, and now I have a son in the district, I have two younger children, one of them's going to be starting in the district in the fall, the other one's still just one and a half, so. So I just really want to make sure that not only just for them, but for all of the children, that they have a quality education that's going to prepare them to go out into the world.
Thank you. Next question. What specific skills would you bring to the board?
Well, like I said, I have the background in teaching, so I've learned about not only working in a classroom, but I also worked in the administration at the college that I worked, that I graduated from, so I have both ends, as far as that goes. So I think that thinking about the ways students live and learn, and the way we can offer a variety of learning styles for them, I see with my own son, how, you know, boys with a lot of energy maybe need a little bit more attention, as far as that goes, to get that out when they're younger, and then the focus, and just making sure that they all, everybody just gets to where they need to be. So yeah, that, and then just my own personal, like what I do for work, I work with a lot of people, a lot of personalities, so that kind of thing, too.
Thank you. Number, next question. Sometimes board members have to make difficult decisions that may not be popular or may even be less than helpful for your own child. Can you give us an example where you had to make a decision that was not well-received by your colleagues, friends, neighbors, or family? How did you handle their feedback?
Well, I think at the end of the day, you've got to do what's right, regardless of how that might affect you. So you've got to answer to the people that you are serving and to the community you're serving, and do what is going to benefit the most people.
Next question. We have just come through an extraordinary year with challenges no one could have foreseen. Education has become much more visible and much more political. What do you believe is the role of the school district in educating their children?
I think it's to prepare them for the world they're going to enter, and to make sure that they know the things they need to know, and to let all that other noise drop away, in my opinion. I think we just need to make sure that kids are prepared for the world they're entering, and they, they have a full knowledge of the basics, and then also society, what they need to know about that, too.
Are you aware of the time, training commitments, and ethics law and financial disclosures required for school board membership?
Not holding, honestly.
Without holding you to it, would it be your intention to run for a seat on the board in November?
Yeah, absolutely.
That was all six. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Are we introducing her?
Sure.
Would you mind just introducing yourself to the board members, just your name and...
Sure. I'm Lori Scott, and I live in Madawan.
Thank you. I'm Aaron Mandel. I'm an attorney, and I'm covering for David Rubin, who's the board's counsel this evening. I have a set of six questions that I'm going to ask you on behalf of the board, they're the same six questions that was asked, that were asked to the other candidate just before. Number one, why do you want to be a board member?
So it's interesting. I've wanted to be a board member for many, many years, but when I first moved to Madawan and bought my house 25 years ago, I was not in a position where I felt I had enough education to do so. Back then, I was an advertising writer, I committed to New York, I wrote ads for Shores websites, things of that nature, but since then, as I'm sure future questions will ask me about, is what I do now and how that can contribute. I've always been a passionate advocate for kids, even when I worked in advertising. I created a nonprofit that worked with kids in homeless shelters and empowered them through SCL activities, and now that I have 20 years as a teacher, and I have my administration certification, and I've done so much to empower thousands of kids at this point, and my kids have pretty much grown. I have a 23-year-old who graduated from this district and just graduated from college and got his first job. My daughter's a rising junior, doing great here playing field hockey, and now I can finally give back to the town that I really care about and love living here. So I'm thankful that this opportunity came up, because it gives me the chance, if I'm appointed, to be a part of the board, get a flavor of it. I absolutely think it's what I want to do, and then if I am chosen, I can go on the ballot later on and make that contribution later on for a much longer period of time. So with the background I have in writing and teaching, and the passion I have for this town, and to give back to kids, that's why I'm here tonight.
Next question. What specific skills would you bring to the board?
So specifically, I mean, above all, if I was going to use one sentence, again, it has to do with my passion for kids. I have seen since I was a teenager, working in youth group, the difference it makes when you can empower people and respect people. So as a teacher, I've been working for 20 years, I've worked in middle school and high school, I've taught everything from inclusion classes all the way up to teaching AP. I've been able to work with all sorts of students, and I think what I bring to the table is the respect and caring for those kids. And when I'm in the classroom, the students know that every time they walk in, they are going to learn something that day, and it could be both or one or the other. It could be the academics that I focus on as an 11th and 12th grade English teacher, or it could be the more soft components that have to do with social-emotional learning, and lots of my students will walk out saying, I learned more in your class than I've learned in any other class, but mostly what I've learned is how to be me, and discover who I am, and what I'm good at, and how to take those skills and make me be the best person I can be. I think my advertising background brings a great deal to this, too. I was a writer professionally for over 10 years, and I'm able to take that into everything I do. I'm able to write effectively, clearly, speak it, and I think that makes a big difference in today's world. I'm sure we could all agree that many people do not do that well, so I could bring that here, too. Because I did education as an alternate group person, I felt that it was really important to get a strong grounding, because we don't do the student teaching intensively like the others do. So I put myself in the National Board Certification Program, and I have had my National Board Certification, which is one of the highest honors that you can go for and get, so I feel very confident, and that prepares us all the way from special education, English language learners, inclusion, going all the way up to APN honors, and making sure that students, no matter where they are, that we can meet them where they are and bring them where they're supposed to be. My evaluations, if we, we're on the... My evaluations, if we, we're on the Danielson model, and that's from a 1 to a 4. In my district, we have to have, in order to even get a 4 in a subject, our supervisors have to document it and have language proving that we deserve that 4. And I average a 3.7 every single year. So I think that I can bring what I do in the classroom. And even though I haven't been an administrator, and I fully say, I don't know what that's like on a daily basis, the projects I worked with, such as bringing standard baits for report cards into the early years in the K through, pre-K to 2 in our district, gave me a flavor for what it is. And my job would be to take what I know, learn from all of you who have been doing this longer than me, and just support the school system and being the best it can be. Because it did a great job by my son. It's doing a great job by my daughter. And how to, how can I give back and support in that way with my passion and caring about learning?
Next question. Sometimes board members have to make difficult decisions that may not be popular or may even be less than helpful for your own child. Can you give us an example where you had to make a decision that was not well-received by your colleagues, friends, neighbors, or family? How did you handle their feedback?
Well, I think the backbone for all of this is really taking a look at what the goal is overall. What are we trying to do for students? It's a slightly different example. But when I, I created a nonprofit years ago, as I mentioned, when I worked with kids in homeless shelters, and I had to do a lot of cold calling in order to get supplies and food and things like that. And I'd get people coming to, saying very rude things to me on the phone. I'd get to the point where I wouldn't want to make the phone calls. It was just too stressful and anxiety-filled. And I had a coach who worked with me and said, listen, you need to take the focus off of you. This isn't about you. This is about the kids you're working with. And as soon as I was able to shift that focus over to what I was doing for the kids for our homeless shelters, suddenly I didn't matter anymore, and I was able to make those calls. So what I hear you saying in that question is, it has to not be about me. It has to be what's best for the kids. And the kids are not my kids, right? I have to step out and say, what is best for the hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of kids in every level, in every way that they show up, to be the best they can be? And I've had situations with my kids in sports and academics where things weren't fair for my kid. But that's, if I'm coming on the score, it can't be about my kids. If I'm coming on the score to have it be about my daughter, then I'm here for the wrong reasons. So I hope that answers your question.
Next question. We have just come through an extraordinary year with challenges no one could have foreseen. Education has become much more visible and much more political. What do you believe is the role of the school district in educating their children?
Well, I think the role is played basically in two pieces. I think that I can say, I as a parent, and any of you who are parents in the room, our role is to educate our own kids, which has to do a lot about values and character, right? But there's so much that I can't teach my kids, which is why I don't homeschool them, right? They come to a public education center, which is our school district. The breadth and depth of what our teachers in this district are able to do is incredible, and I can't do that. So I think as far as the role of a district is giving them that breadth of depth and depth of all the different subjects that they are here to teach, being able to understand, have our students understand that there are different ways of learning, different ways of teaching, different ways of being. I know in my school, when I walk through the high school between classes, I hear so many different ways of teaching and so many different opinions. And I have to hope that my kid now comes to school with that character and values that I've given her, and she's able to be exposed to all different ways of teaching and learning, and that she's going to take that on. I think another really important piece that we had trouble with during the pandemic was the role of the school district is to be eyes and ears of how the kids are doing. And there are many times that there's abuse going on at home, there's food insecurity going on at home. And I don't, I'm sure that was a part of your conversations, as it was in my district, being so afraid during the pandemic that we didn't have teachers and administrators there on the ground seeing and hearing and catching these kids who really needed our help. So I see that in challenging times, like the parents are there to give the background, and we are there to provide the whole other side, and that we come together.
Next question. Are you aware of the time, training commitments, and ethics law and financial disclosures required for school board membership?
I don't think I can know until I'm a school board member exactly what's involved. I do know from my perspective of what I've seen that, of course, as a teacher, you know that I have to sign off on so many things, saying, talking about confidentiality, especially when it comes to things about him. When I hear about IEPs, when I've been on the IRS committee at my school, putting personal plans together for academic and social success, all of that cannot get out to the public. So I do know that there are so many pieces involved in him reports that confidentiality is essential in order for us to be trusted and believed, and legally, we're responsible. So from that perspective, I know some of it. And I'm sure, should I be fortunate enough to get this position, you'd let me know everything that I'd have to keep private.
Last question. Without you, without holding you to it, would it be your intention to run for a seat on the board in November?
Without holding me to it? Absolutely. Unless I, but I did hear you say during this meeting that I was not aware of that that would be applying within two weeks' time, right? The end of July, you'd have to put in for it. So I don't know if there'd even be one board meeting in there. Perhaps there'd be one. So just know, my intention has been, since I came to this town, that being a part of the board would be something that I want to do. I finally feel that with my educational background, my writing background, having had both of my kids go through every single school here, I know people in every single school. I know, I'll just share real fast that my son went from coming into Ravine Drive and not wanting to read and having Miss Donovan say, he's just missing a couple of reading rules. As soon as I teach him, he'll be fine. He excelled through the STEM program here through Dr. Jagman, got into Lehigh University, graduated with straight A's, just got a job, started on Monday, moved out. He can't have gotten a better foundation than what he got in this district. So if I can be a part of helping every kid launch and do whatever they need to intellectually and socially and emotionally, that's what I'd want to be able to do. So it would be my intention to go on the ballot in November.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I go to the library now?
I'm sorry.
I go back to the library now?
I think we'll.
You can stay here.
Well, thank you both very much. You guys provided great answers to all of our questions. So thank you both very much. In terms of a process, just so you know, we are going to enter exec session where we discuss things. Then we will be coming back out, and we take, we vote in public. And so that will happen tonight. But because exec session is a little bit long, it's up to you if you want to stay for that or if you would like to get a phone call in the morning. So right now, we're estimating exec session to be about 45 minutes, because we have a couple of other topics we're discussing. So your choice either way. So I just wanted to make you aware of that beforehand. So be it resolved that a closed session be convened for the purposes of discussing privacy, personnel, and attorney-client matters. The subject matter of these discussions will be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality subsides. Although the board cannot guarantee it, the length of the executive session is estimated to be 45 minutes, after which the public, the public meeting of the board shall reconvene and proceed with business. Action will take place. Can I get a motion and a second to enter executive session?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion and a second to return to public session?
Motion.
Okay. So first of all, thank you all for staying. I know we were in there forever. But it, for good reason, because I think you're both very qualified candidates. And so we had a hard time. And you both have similar backgrounds as well. So we had a hard time, because you're both great. So with that said, one thing I do want to mention is, obviously, this is a very short, condensed term. And applications, if one, both of you would like to run for the three-year term, you would need to get papers in, which is essentially your signatures, that sort of thing. It's another background information. Would need to be into the county by July 31st. And it's doable. It's not that hard, like any of the financial stuff. Yeah, just to call the business office. So with that, we need to move to a nomination to fill the vacancy for the Madawan seat. Can I get a nomination and a second? I nominate Lori Scott.
I'll second.
Any other nominations? Okay, then we close the nominations and we take a vote. Mrs. Vailas?
Yes.
Mrs. Gerschner?
Yes.
Mr. Montone?
Yes.
Ms. Pell?
Yes.
Ms. Farrell?
Yes.
Ms. Wernicky?
Yes.
Ms. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Colley?
Yes.
So Ms. Scott, you will be taking the, obviously, we still have to go through all of the checks and that sort of thing. But you will be taking the Madawan seat for the next four months, five months, roughly, depending on how long all the checks take. And as I mentioned, both of you, and thank you very much for coming out as well. You are very highly qualified. So if you're interested in the seat, we do recommend that both of you, as well as the additional candidates who initially put in, can just get your papers in, and then the town will vote in November. But congratulations, welcome. And we will be in touch shortly, right, with more information. So that brings us to, that's all we have to vote, right?
Yes.
Okay. So that brings us to a second executive session. Be it resolved that a closed session be.
Mrs. Colley?
Yes. I'm sorry, real quick. I just want to remind everybody that tomorrow night is, if it doesn't rain, the Chris Doom game at the high school, the soccer game for the fundraiser for the scholarship. And it's at 6:30. And rain date would be the 21st. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you. And actually, good reminder, because I forgot to do unfinished business and new business. So if any board members have any unfinished or new business, please let me know. No? Okay. Okay. So be it resolved that a closed session be convened for the purposes of discussing privacy, personnel, and attorney-client matters. Subject matter of these discussions will be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality subsides. Although the board cannot guarantee it, the length of the executive session is estimated to be one hour, after which the public meeting of the board shall reconvene and proceed with business. Action may take place. Can I get a motion and a second?
On motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.